Okay, friends, it's 7:30. And it's called the record meeting of the Greensboro Plant Commission Order. Please stand. I'm glad you're here.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, in this republic, we say one nation, America, indivisible, and infinite in its scope.
John, would you call, roll please.
Blake O'Mara.
Here.
Adam Edinger.
Here.
Roy Minnior.
Present.
Dan Buckover.
Here.
Kevin Ebbey.
Here.
Kevin Plaidwards.
Present.
Tom Hunter.
Here.
Thank you. Full house tonight. We have minutes have been sent to you via email. I think you have had a chance to read them. And there is a copy placed in front of you at your place, too. Are there corrections or additions to the minutes?
If I'm a -- my name has an A. It should be S.T.P.H.E.N. under number one.
That does need to be corrected. We will make sure it is E. Not Steve A., it's Steve N.
Yes.
That's -- yeah. Sorry for that. The other notations here, corrections. With that noted correction, there a motion to accept minutes?
No move.
Second.
Second.
John? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. They are approved with the correction. You have several items of business. First off, the first item here lists the listing of the buildings and properties, the status and so forth. You did receive that building status update via email also. I don't know if you -- we do have, as you see here, three of the four items are going to be addressed individually and separately. So maybe we can move to that unless you have a question about the update itself that you want to clarify. You ready?
One that's not on the list to do later is the Finley residence. And if you want to drive by there tomorrow, whatever, there is a dump truck setting there now. They're going to start removing some of the stuff from the house so they can get access to start fixing the house. I was called today and told that the process has begun. I have a phone number for the person doing the work. So if we don't see something out hang within, you know, the next couple of days, we can get back in. They did deliver the truck today, and Mr. Finley's supposed to get in there. They're supposed to go in and start getting some stuff moved out of the house so that they can make it presentable.
Okay. We may come back to that after we go through here these others or expedite their time. First on the list is Mr. Larsson and Ms. Bobian.
Very good, yes.
Got a left of staff here. On the Decatur Hotel. So we have a small report here indicating that there's progress being made, but we would like to hear it from your lips. So if you would state your name for the record and then just give us what information you --
Sure. Sure. My name is Julie Bobian. I am the president at Housing Partnerships. And we have actually been doing some work on there. So the work that we've been doing has been mostly interior work. So we've been doing a lot of the clean out. So there was a lot of debris that was left over from years ago that was wet, moldy, and just kind of not so nice. So we've been doing the clean out of that and getting that ready for preparation for actual reconstruction. So we are still in the process of working with our investors to get all of the money in line to be able to go through the actual acquisition process. So we are hoping to be able to close on that building at the end of October. And once that happens, we will start construction right away. So the first thing that we're going to do will be stabilization, concentrating on stabilizing a specific building. So we'll finish doing some clean out on there and get it stabilized. Construction, we plan on having all four buildings completed by the end of 2014 is our goal. And then have them all leased up within a few months after that, so kind of spring of 2015. So -- but our goal is to be able to get that one stabilized as soon as we do take possession of the property.
And I know the possession of property's been in process for some time.
It is.
Well, when she says possession of property, she actually -- this is Isaac Larsson's -- what she actually means is, one thing that she means is as well, is that she actually -- they have to purchase the property from myself.
Correct.
For the project. So acquisition of that will happen sometime in, we hope, October is what we're hoping for. So that's the acquisition that she's speaking.
Yes.
Okay.
Is your purchase sitting on contract right now?
From the old hotel. That's correct. The old hotel.
And in terms of stabilization of what you've done up to this point, you've indicated you're doing some clean out and trying to get the building ready so that you can move quickly once
Yes.
that happens with the present owners acquiescence on that. I guess part of what we have also been concerned about from the beginning, not so much the interior
Yes.
as we have the condition of the walls, the roof
Yes.
and how it has impacted neighboring
Yep.
Yeah.
Buildings. What -- I've seen some stuff up there, but I don't know exactly what's happened. Can you give the commission and then open it for other questions here? What has been done or what is being done?
Earlier this summer, we had a group of guys go over there to repair the holes in the roof. So there was an old tarp that was over there that was basically just kind of flapping in the wind. So we secured that a little bit more. We pulled the rubber membrane that had kind of bunched up that was causing some pooling. We pulled that, straightened that out in order to allow water to drain off more appropriately. We also patched up some of the holes that were there so that way there's no water now running to the next door building. We have talked to Brad and told Brad, you know, if you do have any more water issues that are coming in, please let us know. I've had no response back from him saying that there are further issues that he's had. So I take that to mean that we've had at least temporarily solved the problem until we're able to go through and do the complete renovation.
I've spoke -- I've seen Brad a few times, and he's -- and I stopped in there probably within a month. Brad wasn't in there, but they hadn't had any issues at that point. So I feel pretty good about it. He would have called me. He's got my cell phone, so he stays in contact as far as that goes.
And we've been in there since when it's been raining and before you pretty much had waterfalls coming in. And now it's down to a trickle. So we believe that our temporary fixes have worked for now.
Members of the commission, we should ask questions of Mr. Larsson or this -- Well, it's time. In terms of the roof that you -- so it's a temporary roof that you are going to completely redo the roof?
Correct. Yes, yes.
That's why you're kind of just doing some temporary things?
Yes, yes. Because right now, given that we have -- we don't own the property and we aren't wanting to put all the money that we do have in it. And so we want to make sure that once we start investing all of our money, that it goes as far as it needs to be going and that it's done correctly and properly. And so right now, if we were to go on and put a new roof on the building, it wouldn't be appropriate, given the fact that the rest of the building needs to be done, too.
The design work is pretty well complete, then?
Almost. We are probably around ninety, ninety-five percent complete. We're hoping to have final drawings within the next two weeks. And then we should be all ready and up to go. They keep kind of changing because we've been working with the National Park Service to get historic tax credits for the project. And we just walked that with them a couple of weeks ago and had to make some adjustments because of our walk with them. But we do believe that once we're finished, the product is going to be beautiful and this community is going to really have a good facelip right there on that corner especially.
Well, we're glad that you're investing. We're eager to see it.
Yes.
We are, too.
So are we. So are we. Unfortunately, the way that these funds operate and working with the different investors and stuff that we work with is just a long process, unfortunately. But we are moving as quickly as we possibly can. And right now, we don't foresee any issue with being able to close next month and then being able to get the guys over there starting as soon as that happens. So everybody knows, and the team knows, that this is a big priority and that you guys have a lot of concern around this building. And so we hear that, and we will do everything we can to move as quickly as we can.
Okay.
You mentioned four buildings.
Yes.
Is the building behind it considered as other buildings?
It is. It is. So there's two considered right there.
Okay.
Yep.
The other two are the Y and the apartments back behind the building?
Yeah, the lots and the thing. Forty units altogether. It's all set up.
Okay. One last opportunity here. We appreciate you coming in.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
I know it's probably an inconvenience, but
No.
Not at all.
We feel we've been patient with this, and we do want -- and if, once you get -- go ahead, if you could keep us in the loop.
Definitely.
We would appreciate that, just so that we have a current status.
No problem. If you guys have any questions at all, please don't hesitate to ask. You know, Gary knows how to get ahold of me, and I'm more than happy to come and talk and answer whatever I can.
Okay.
We appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second item here, C, item C on the agenda, is the dress factory update.
Thanks.
And Ms. Spraz here to give us an update on that. I know we have written here that the fire department has secured the building, the lower level of the building, just last week, maybe?
Yes, just
Okay. So if you could tell us what the progress is on this building?
Okay, we had a local group, I think you know who it is, Glenn, but I'd rather not say. They would like -- they want -- we're interested in doing twelve apartments, very upscale apartments with drives coming in to the front. They have not approached the mayor yet, but that was their plan. In the meantime, Keller Development is the one that was bidding for that at the same time that the bid was let out for the other three buildings. So they cannot apply because those are all senior housing. They cannot apply for senior housing again. But they are going to make an offer to have Section Eight housing. I suggested that they try to do market rate house apartments because we need them desperately in Greensburg. There are no market rate apartments. In the meantime, the kids keep destroying the building. Hopefully, after Scott ordered it out this time, I'm hoping it will help.
Yeah.
There's another window broken out I saw the other day.
Yeah, there are two hundred and ten windows in that building.
On the lower level?
No, on the -- oh.
No, on the upper level, but it just -- you can't access -- no one could access it, but I'm just making mention that another one's broken.
Yeah.
That I saw the other morning.
That's another problem. Can -- and I realize that you're only representing, so I'm not being critical of you or taking you to task for not doing something.
Right.
You know, we've been -- this has been a problem for a while, and I don't know -- can you help us understand what or how we could make the people that own this property responsible?
I think you all know that it's two young real estate brokers who bought that. They paid four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for it. The price right now is, we lowered it down to a hundred and twenty-five. So they're losing so much. They are about to declare bankruptcy because of this building. That's why it's so important that we get an offer on it, because the bank is still willing to work with us. But they've lost about three hundred thousand already.
And I'm sympathetic, but at the same time, the property is here and it is becoming a nuisance, and it could -- they could lose a lot more if they -- if it should -- other things could happen to it or other events could happen inside it that could make it worse.
They have kept the insurance because they just put on a new roof after the, you know, after the tornado. They had to put on -- the insurance put on a new roof. So at least we have a new roof. The rest of the building's in pretty bad shape, but if, you know, the -- Keller Development is meeting with the mayor on the twenty-sixth. And they're telling me they're going to make an offer after their meeting with the mayor.
And Section Eight housing.
Mm-hmm.
I think I know what that is. Can you elaborate?
Especially -- well, they have a -- they already have an existing. It's out on 421. Scott did tell me
Truceville Estates.
Truceville Estates. They do, you know, the police gets a lot of calls because Section Eight housing is -- it could be, you know, I would
Lower income, it's lower income government subsidized housing.
But I thought I understood that, but I just wanted to make it clear in front of you.
But at least it would be somebody occupying the building.
And are you telling me that this Keller Development, they have first option from the seven
No, they do not.
What happened to the -- what happened to the market rate?
The other local -- if they can come in with an offer before the twenty-sixth, it knocks Keller out.
Okay. Members' questions?
And I would much rather see them build those twelve units because it would be first class.
Well, I think I'd really have twelve units than twenty-five, whatever we want to put in there.
I'm predicting Keller was looking at eighteen units, I believe. I happened to be in the mayor's office when
What'd you call?
Don Galley called. They were the ones that were plying against
Right.
the other project for the tax credits. They realized that they can't go for senior housing, so they're going for eighteen one and two bedroom units. And she was supposed to be getting that mix together of one versus two and bring that to the meeting, which she didn't.
And it's zoned now?
Multi-plant one.
It's zoned R4. Because we zoned it some years ago, but we're never going to put in another one. All right. Members' questions? Bruce?
I think the problem we've had before in the past on getting this property sold, we had another investment group looking at it. And you can correct me if I'm wrong or if it's been changed. Isn't that building considered on the National Extortion Society?
It is.
So you got to follow
So you have to follow certain guidelines.
And they, I don't think, when they found out what it entailed, they decided not to go that direction. So that's why it's got more shake than
Now, we also had a development group from Louisville that showed interest. Then when Keller jumped back in, they're kind of losing because I have a feeling they're the same type.
Almost Keller themselves.
Are there other questions?
Actually, how big is the lot there? Do you have any idea?
I think it's one point -- it's about 1.6 acres. So that's why with the other group, they wanted to, you know, go into garages in the front, which would have been a great, you know, and I think we'd all be willing to, you know, try to help them do that.
I wouldn't say anything wrong with that myself. I think it would improve and enhance the neighborhood very much.
It would. It really would.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in.
I am going to be joining Realty executives, but I have talked to the share of brothers who own it, and I will continue with the listings.
And if you have good news.
I will.
Sure.
Oh, Scott, no.
It's probably me first, but okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming in. Any other questions?
And if you have any questions, call them and it's never too long.
Before I leave this topic, though, I do want to talk to Scott and Gary among ourselves before we leave this topic. my concern is in July, July sixteenth, we were informed by both you and the police chief that that was a major hazard, safety problem, so forth. We made the decision here, based on that, I think primarily based on that, plus the fact that it's due to a problem, that there was to be something done about it post-attack. And the mayor asked us, well, how are you going to pay for it? And we said, well, if the city can't do it, as they typically would, and in a expeditious way, then guess we'd have to hire it then. And I understand what happened and why the decision was delayed in part. That suddenly there was somebody that was going to be interested locally, that was going to, if they were going to take care of it, we wouldn't have to do it and so forth. But that turned in from what I was understanding to be a week, two weeks, you know, in the near term. And, you know, it -- and we waited and waited, I guess. I don't know, whatever. But it was finally taken care of, but it was taken care of, not quite, but almost two months later. So either it's a real problem or it's not. That's one question I've got. Second question I have is, who makes the decision on that? As to -- I -- we made a decision that we thought it had to be done quickly, but then another decision was made that no, it doesn't have to be done quickly. And we're going to -- and the decision was made, we're going to wait an indefinite period of time until, you know, just before this meeting, roughly. So you understand my --
Right.
And I haven't talked to the other members of the commission. I don't know how they feel about it. This is just me speaking right now. But I guess if I was in their shoes, I'd have the same concern. It's not because I'm conducting the meetings. I think it's a matter of, either we've got some authority and make a decision about something, or at least bring it back to us and tell us circumstances have changed, these are the reasons, we need to make a delay. And so I'm going to be quiet. And if I'm out of order, I'm going to leave the rest of the commission members to tell me. That's fine. But my concern is, either we make a decision and we expect some follow-up, or at least we ought to have some follow-up in a timely way that says circumstances have changed, what do you think? And it can be just even in a -- and if people are going to override what we do, that's fine, but I still think we need to have -- not necessarily fine, but I understand that somebody can and may and will. But I think we ought to have the -- there ought to be some respect shown back to this body, or otherwise, we're just -- we're wasting our time.
So you're asking me the question is, what is the process after we make a decision?
Well, I think the decision was to have the city attorney write a letter and get in contact with the gentleman in Carmel that owned the building and tell them what the decision of your board was.
Which, yes, I did.
Which I believe you did.
Which he did. I then went to Gloria, talked with Gloria, got phone numbers, made -- tried to make contact with the brothers, I think they're Shear Brothers or something like that. To know about, no, neither one of them returned the calls. At that point, I think maybe there was some confusion. It was said in here that if the city couldn't, or certain people couldn't do it, we would hire them. Well, do we have to take bids? Do we have to do all that stuff with this? So at that point, I think it got lost.
Well, there was also the contact from Keller Development. We also knew about the local group. We also put that in the report last month, that we were aware of those two offers and that those two competing offers, with the pressure on the current owner, might expedite the process.
But I guess my concern is, if you deem it that it's going to be unsafe for kids, do we need to take care of the problem immediately, like what was discussed?
That's what I thought the decision was. That, yes, that had to happen, but in the meantime, it was an immediate concern. At least that's what I recall from the meeting, and that's what kind of was indicated in the minute.
Yeah, I thought we were going to handle it as soon as we could, you know. You know, if you guys didn't have time, I think the mayor said that, you know, he had a lot of people on vacation, and if you guys couldn't do it, we'd find somebody that can do it and get it done. And I thought it was going to be right away, too. And as a matter of fact, I've been driving past it, but I asked Bruce today, I drove past before I came in, and I did see Plowwood up and down, but it's been a lot of gafford since.
Who went to fix it in Higginland? You got the apartment?
We spent about twelve man-hours and probably close to $150 worth of materials. Early last week, when we saw nothing had happened, again, depending on, I don't know what that we talked about, I mean, are we securing the entire building? Are we securing the first floor so kids don't get in it? We're talking about the second story. If we're doing all that, then we do have to take bids. We do have to
I think the implication was that it was the first floor, we needed to make sure that kids and people, because you had, police chief said, and there were calls out there, you'd indicated there is a concern about safety and fire and so forth. I think that was what we said. Again, I'm, in the end, Oswald Entle, I guess? I don't know. It's, no one was hurt. We didn't have any further problem, and I understand that. But I -- it is a matter of, maybe we need to be even much more explicit and maybe not. Maybe we should just leave it, take care of it using your own good judgment, and we just give guidance. If that's the case, then that's the case, too.
Personally, I think once we deem something unsafe, it needs to be addressed immediately. They need to be given fifteen days or whatever day limit to get it done. If it's not done, then we secure the building and their building process. And also, their bad investments are not our concern.
That's right.
I mean, their great investments, we're not going to get anything from that, so, you know, it's too bad that they bought something at a time when it wasn't to their benefit to buy it, but, you know, that doesn't impact my decision on what they have to be doing whatsoever. So, you know, I think we need to, we need a policy so it's clear for everybody, not just one entity we're dealing with, so that you know that if you're brought before the board, you're told to make a building safe in that fifteen days, I'd say is plenty of time. If it's that urgent, fifteen days, fifteen days too long to get it done, if it's not done, we do it, we build for it. Case closed.
Is that a motion?
And I would just add, if the board wants to move that quickly with it, I recommend that
I say only, I'm only talking about those things that we deem to be a hazard right away. We had discussion about this, that it was a hazard, and I'm not We had discussion about this, that it was a hazard. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. I just say, that's the problem, is we don't have a clear set of directions on how to do things.
I just want to say that if it wants to move that quickly, that the board look at requesting quotes from people, and we have a contractor prepared to instantly go do that. You know, we have duties that we do, and again, 12 hours, 12 man-hours, took a whole afternoon of stuff that, you know. So, you know, we do it because we try to save the city money. And we actually do catch heck from contractors that drive by because we're taking bread out of their, you know, out of their wallet. So, you know, I agree that it should have been done quicker, and I do apologize for that. But again, I think if we want to move this quickly with stuff, we have somebody on staff or not on staff, but on-call that after 15, I like the 15 days. Actually, I would go for 10, but I'll take 15. You know, boom. At that point, myself or Gary or Chris or whoever here calls and says, you know, "John, go board it out."
What would be the procedure for us to have someone, Chris, on-call that we could, so we don't have to take bids and everything, just to do an emergency?
Well, you don't have to take bids if you've got an emergency.
Well, to be completely honest, I would have to look more closely at the public works rules. Generally speaking, Glenn is correct. If you have a deemed emergency, you do not necessarily have to have bids on an emergency, if it's a deemed emergency. Now, the problem, I think, with what Chief Chastain is discussing is the idea of having one contractor. That's problematic, because then you have selected one contractor out of 15 or 20, all of the contractors, you know. That, I think, is going to raise issues for us at the state level, to be able to say that we want to do that. Additionally, I will be honest with you, I am not certain if this planning commission has the statutory authority to circumvent the public works. Yes, you all made a determination that this was an unsafe building, which allows you, under the unsafe building statutes, to say, "This needs to move forward." What I don't know is if that power from the planning commission extends beyond that to what the issue we had here, which is if the work is significant enough, do we need to take bids? Do we have to do all of that? And I'll be honest, I simply don't know the answer to that question. But I would be happy to find out the answer to that question, because I do agree with Glenn that, that, you know, I think everyone's understanding was, when this body, you know, ended this meeting was, "This needs to happen quickly. We've made a determination. We've heard the evidence, and that needs to happen."
Look, when we deem that unsafe, it wasn't the, it was brought by Stacey and Scott, the public safety officials, basically saying that it was unsafe, giving us the information. Is that right?
Right. Yeah, and that's, and that, and to be honest, Blake, I don't know, that's the interplay I have to look at here. Because, because basically you have the multiple levels of government and the checks and balances system in making sure that the public, that the statutory scheme that you're using coincides with the public work scheme that has to be followed and approved, so that everything is meshing together. I think in an ideal, utopic world, this body, which has the responsibility for making the initial determination as far as an unsafe building is concerned, would say, "We deem that to be unsafe. Go forth and fix it." The question is, how do we set up the structured policy that Dr. Hunter, or Mr. Hunter, is it Dr. or Mr.? Mr. Hunter was talking about in order to effectuate that. And I think there's a way to do it. I just don't know exactly what it is.
We don't really make any final decisions. Our decision generally is a recommendation of the council, typically, in terms of even our voting changes and so forth and so on. Where we get, where we get the mix up is the unsafe building piece. And that needs to be clarified. And again, I'm not, it just brought up the question that I think needs to be clarified, because, and then I think there needs to be, from your office, back to us, because you are a primary link to the administration, letting us know what's going on. With regard to a decision we make, a recommendation, if it's only a recommendation we make, or whatever it is that we're doing, I think that has to come back to us, and I think it ought to come back with enough explanation that we understand why. If we ask the question why, we ought to be able to answer it, for the most part. You know, in general, please.
Can I get a clarification? I gave you an unsafe building report last month, told you what the strategy was. I did not hear from anybody that that was the wrong approach to take until the next month, when we got here. If somebody had a problem with the report and that we hadn't acted fast enough, I wish somebody would have informed us. Second, I think if we're looking to get reimbursed for expenditures, there is a notice requirement that we have to contact the property owner of record in the county courthouse by certified mail. And if we don't get a certified card back, we're not going to get reimbursed.
It's not certified mail anymore, but the, under the current statutory scheme, it's just by U.S. first-class mail. It was previously certified, you are correct. If, and that may be ultimately a decision that this body decides to make, that, you know, "We're going to do this regardless of our ability." You know, the safety of children and the community is greater to us than our ability to get reimbursed for it. And that may be the decision you guys have to make. But you are correct. If your intention is to hold someone liable through reimbursement, or fines, or costs, or whatever component that may be, then there is a notice and due process requirement associated with that, even under, you know, even under these types of circumstances. Now, and I, and I, I think in my analysis of the interplay between the two statutory schemes for public works and this one, I can also address that scenario of what this means for this body. If this body does X, what's the result?
I did have, or attend a State Board of Accounts meeting, and we have a problem getting contractors, because we have to go around and fix sidewalks, make them ADA compliant. As far as the transition plan is required. Council sets aside $20,000 a year. I can't get contractors to give me bids for it. So there is a provision under services, since the city does take bids for concrete when they do street repairs and dig up sidewalks for the water company, and we bought the truncated domes that go into the things. I asked the State Board of Accounts, "If we provided the concrete and we took bids for it and we provided that, they are doing nothing more than forming and pouring concrete." That is a service, and you don't need to get bids for that. So if we want to stock plywood and nails and stuff, and have one or two contractors we can call as a service to go board something up, we can do that. Without taking bids, without doing anything else. But again, whether you want to get reimbursed with a notice is something different to decide.
And we're going to get to that on the agenda here, under these letter business.
And I think Gary's aware of this, too. I mean, the city provides a lot of services, even for neglected homes and mortgage companies that people could fall upon and were continuously mowing their lawns. And I don't know the real answer to it. I know others making the neighborhood look presentable and keeping rodents and wild animals, and hopefully deterring people away from those properties by making it look like someone lives there. But as far as getting reimbursed for our services, it's, it really happens.
Well, it's, it's in the ordinance, it can be, it should be being billed for it.
You're not typically sent out unless we receive a letter, a certified green card back that says, "Somebody has accepted that, and we know they have been notified." Now, we do it once a year per property and tell them that's all they're going to get. And as long as we know we've got that on file, then every month or whatever, when it reaches that certain height, we just go do it. And it gets filed, and the courthouse is a lien on the property.
Again, I thought we, well, that's another discussion. Because I thought we would change that to actually being able just to not put on the property, but bill them, correct, like we do the trash?
Under the ordinance? I don't believe it says that we can bill them directly. We can either, it can either be recorded as a lien, or we can seek to,
Get it civilly through court.
Get it civilly through court, yes.
To your point, Gary, yes, you did send us this, but there's nothing mentioned about securing the building or how it's being safetyed or not safetyed. And you tell us that you've got a couple bids, you're doing this and that, but there's nothing about the safety act. Okay. Another pleasant topic, the Wilson problem.
I can tell you where things stand. I spoke with Mr. Atkins this morning. He informed me when I spoke to him that he had intentions of being here, trying to make it here to be in front of you. I don't know what happened. I can just tell you what he told me. His status is that since receiving the authorization from this board, he has been in negotiations, ongoing negotiations with the holder of the tax sale certificate. They came back and wanted a different number than evidently he had thought they were going to say. They have been going back and forth and dickering back and forth over the cost. And they have finally reached an accord, and he anticipates giving them money this week to get that. I did also contact the property manager, Troy Tarvin, and did confirm what Mr. Atkins had told me. So I did get some independent verification of that, that they have been going back and forth in negotiations over the cost of how much.
Have they come to an agreement?
They have come to an agreement, and they all anticipate that he will give them money and get his tax sale certificate this week.
All right. Well, as you may have surmised, there's been nothing done with the property up to this point, because of Kidd, I guess, legally. And so it's still as it was. But once he has that certificate, from what we were, we, at least what I understood last meeting, was that he then has authority to work on the outside, correct?
Correct.
And he has to get it presentable within a reasonable period of time.
30 days, was what we agreed to and what he's been notified of, as well as the conversation I had with him this morning, was as soon as you get that, you realize you have 30 days to get in there and get it cleaned up. He indicated that that was his intention.
Okay. Any other questions or clarification? Okay, well. Anything else on the unsafe buildings report for these three items? And I don't really recall why E is on there. Put it on there, I guess.
I did.
E, the downtown building structural.
You, we had talked about that in the past for unsafe structures. I think it was more related to Mr. Plake's building that went down, and I believe Brian Robbins came in.
Right. I know, I know the past. I don't understand why it's on the agenda tonight.
It had never come back up since we had discussed it, and I had given you some proposed, some ordinances from some other areas, and I just, you had assigned some people to look at some stuff, and I didn't know if you were ready to discuss that or not.
I don't know if others have, but I have taken time to look at the couple of different ordinances, maintenance and so forth, in some other locations. And looking at those and looking at what we have already in our unsafe building ordinance and in our maintenance ordinance with regard to grass and that kind of thing. We're really pretty, we've really got as much here as we need, frankly. I don't know that we need anything else. I mean, one of the other things we talked about at one point was, well, do we need to do some sort of a structural review or survey? But that's an undertaking that I'm not sure that we're prepared to do in terms of both financially, as well as the liability pieces of it all, in terms of the city. So unfortunately, other than the structural, not structural, the operational safety that the fire chief has for these buildings on some sort of irregular basis, I know, that's, that is lesser until we get a report or we see a problem that requires a more thorough investigation, a more thorough review of, by professional. I'm not sure that we can take the next steps in terms of all downtown. That's kind of where my thoughts were. And in terms of looking at maintaining buildings and so forth, I think we, if you look at the unsafe buildings, and I think he sent this out to all of us at one point in time, there's a, there's a lot there in terms of, 17 different ways in which buildings can be described as unsafe or not maintained in the condition that's conducive for safety or well-being. And so I don't know that we need to redraft something, is what I guess.
Mr. Teck, there's one thing that it doesn't address that has been brought up in Indianapolis. It's really not an issue here. But graffiti does get to be something that makes things look unkempt. That maybe a minimum maintenance of, if there is some graffiti on a building, that it be painted over or something. I don't know that you can force people to make, you know, put in new windows if they leak, or put a new roof on if it's a leaky roof. But, I mean, there's things that can make them look presentable, like the mowing and cleaning up and some of those things. And that is one item that we don't address right now.
Has it, have we noticed it being a problem? I mean, maybe we need to be proactive around that situation. We just need to be reactive. Has there been a problem with that?
There is a problem with graffiti on the backside of buildings. Most people don't travel the alleys and go down through them and see them. But, you know, I think the landlords are probably aware of it, and some of them have addressed it, and they've painted over it, you know. And not too long afterwards, someone comes back and does it again. So, you know, it's like, either they've got something against the landlord, or something against the police department on the backside of one of them. You know, it's like, okay. But if the owner doesn't seem to care about it, you know, I don't know. It, I mean, you're not, it is a problem. And there was a building that was really bad about it, but I think it was painted over. And I think the way that the people were getting up there, I think it's going to change, so they don't have easy access to it anymore to get out there and spray.
Well, let's take that under advisement. And unless there's other comments regarding that, at this point in time, we'll just kind of take that advisement and think about that and investigate whether we want to add something to our, not necessarily unsafe buildings, we'll be getting to the maintenance piece of what we're talking about, the grass cuttings and the other kinds of debris and things that are on properties that become a problem. Number two here, discussion potential rezon request. Gary?
Again, that was, for those of you that weren't in attendance, the property owner of where Menards was going to go had come in and talked to the city again and had requested an extension of the variance for the signage that Menards received. for the signage that Menards received. The BZA opted not to renew that for a year. That was good for a year for them to start designing. They're opting to let that one-year period run out if Menards doesn't come back in. But the property owner was kind of a co-applicant with Menards, and he would like to come back next month again and see if your recommendation for the, positive recommendation back to the city council for the rezone for Menards would go through. Now, there's no guarantee it's going to be Menards. He's going to be by himself, at least.